Hi, I'm calling this meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silence for the people in Arizona, Oregon and Nevada. Big, huge tragedy. And now, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I understand we're gonna possibly make a motion here to start things off.
Yeah, what I'd like to do on behalf of the people in chambers at this point is make a motion to deliberate on the soda tax initiative that Mr. Brown had presented as a yea or nay if we go forward. So, we could do that now. We could do that. I'd like to do it right now.
There was a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to deliberate on the sugary drink tax. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. Okay. Who would like to open the discussion?
Do you want to have visitor comments?
Oh, yeah, visitor comments. Yep. Come on up to the table. And please state your name for the record.
Tammy Magra. I just want to make a comment on how poorly you prepared for the public comment on this sugar tax issue. You should've anticipated that it was gonna be a big crowd and had the venue in a bigger place. People were standing outside, we couldn't hear. And also, you're way over the fire marshal capacity for this room. It's 60 and there was way more than 60 people and there was probably at least 100. And there's a reason for that capacity. It's a safety issue. And when confronted about it, nobody seemed to care and I think that's pretty poor on the council's part. And I hope in the future that you kind of follow the rules and regulations a little bit, set a better example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Please state your head.
My name is Shawna Harrison and again, I just think that the council, I know that people previously from this council, I've mentioned that they don't respond to emails and that they do not take social media as they play in regards to making these kind of decisions, but I implore you all to go to the Chronicle's current vote, yea or nay on regards to this tax and you'll see that there's an overwhelming, as you saw here, by the display of people here today, your community pleading you not to do this, so.
Anybody else? Counselor La.
As far as just what I think about it or what?
Yep. Deliberate deliberating.
This all started just as a item to talk about and think about and I think all of us were sort of, you know, wondering how far it would go. And we knew it would probably end up here. I did. Been here too long to not know. And, but it's part of the process. And so many nights we sit here without anybody in these council chambers that once in a while you gotta liven things up. And so, anyway, I'm not sure, I might go speak for the rest of the council, but I think it's... The intent was good by staff and all and I know it got way out of hand as far as the community goes and I'm not sure why it took so long for people to come and talk to us. We don't have to have a public forum for everybody to come in and talk to us on a... We're here every two weeks or twice a month, anyway. And this has been going on for several months. And all of our phone numbers are listed in the directory. Could call us anytime. I generally answer my phone. If I don't, I call back. So, anyway, just wanna thank everybody for their comments and whatnot and I'd just like to encourage that we, everybody gets more involved in their community, maybe quicker instead of later. That's how things generally drag out, get out of hand, so. Anyway, myself, I think that we can maybe kind of delay this down the road and think about getting maybe the, look at maybe the... The health part of it as more of a statewide issue to see what we can come up with and because I do it ourselves in Little Island, it would just be detrimental to our community, so. Right at this time, I can't really vote for it, so. It's my take on it.
Okay, that's a point taken, by the way. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Counselor La. Counselor Morrison.
This is a, was a difficult issue. It's, you know, I have two kids. Not everybody knows I was diagnosed with cancer and my oncologist said sugar is one of the leading causes of the kind of type of cancer I have. And so, it was, it hit home for me, but at the same time, I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian and one fact that Oregon comes together on is only way Oregon's accepted taxes by a vote of the people. It's the only way. It doesn't matter how much I believe in the tax. It's not up to five people to decide what 14,000 people pay. That's just my personal opinion that if the voters really want this, to pay for parks this way, then it should go on a ballot and be chosen by everybody, not by a few. Because not everybody comes to meetings, not everybody goes on social media, not everybody reads the paper, but it's like, it needs to be open to everybody to comment. I read every single letter, I read every single email, I read every single article in the paper, but I wanted to hear from everyone, not just the few, because there are 14,000 people. It's a lot of people and I didn't hear from maybe 200. But it's like, more people should make a choice that's gonna affect everybody. So, I just, you know, I just don't think this is the right avenue, even though I think sugar's awful. I think we encourage everybody to make healthier choices, I don't think it's up to me to monitor their refrigerator. So, that's just how I feel.
Thank you. Do you have a statement or did you already read that?
I did, I did not, but I can surmise it.
I thought we oughta read it, yeah.
I don't have it.
Oh, you don't?
It's in your box, I'll go grab it.
I...
I believe.
I don't think I have it.
Neil, Neil won't get it.
I don't think it's there. Is Susan's?
Yes.
No, I don't have that. But I could surmise it.
Why don't you just do your...
It's a proxy vote from her? And her proxy vote was no?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, I wanted to, I just wanted to...
Okay.
And I talked to her about that, about reading it and she says, "No, you don't have to, it's just a no vote." Only, it's for the record, so it's already in the record.
You just sent an email noted that you were asked to...
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So, her proxy through me is a no vote.
Okay. Counselor President Morton?
Well, I thought tonight was excellent, even though Tammy comes up to me and says that there's too many people in here and, you know, we've gotta dismiss it and whatever. I couldn't do that. When people are in here and they've showed up for this and, you know, I, there's just no way I could do it. So, I came back and we talked about it as well and said, "Let's get it over with as quick as we can." And that won't, we'll try not to let that happen again though, Tammy. Thank you for the suggestion. So, when we anticipate anyone over the size of the room and the fire marshal standards, we'll try to acknowledge that and look for it, okay? So, that being said, and going back to this evening, the process is the most important thing. It's our democracy, it's your chance to be part of a record, it's your chance to express yourself, and that to me is essentially what this is all about. The tax, I went around to every outlet, every business that I possibly could to interview the people. I did that on foot. And I couldn't find a business, a small business that was in support of this. And to me, how could we, how could we, how could me in my good, in my good conscience vote for this when all, every business that I interviewed said no? So, we're not ready. We're not ready at all for this. And a very definite no, and especially with our Shedco, our St. Helens Economic Group telling us to buy local and support our local businesses. This, this doesn't make sense to me at this time. So, it's a definite no.
Thank you, Doug. We all know where I stand. I just want to make it clear that it was my choice to do that, to not show up at the forum, so. But I want to make clear also that on your taxes, that the Greater St. Helens Park and Rec, on your property taxes, is not, nothing to do with our Parks Department. I don't even know how the Eisen Schmidt Pool got that name. Cause I thought it used to, that's where it went. Come to find out, when I come here and I'm at Budget Committee and I'm asking for more funds to be put into our parks and I'm seeing a very small dollar amount that is funding parks, 1.8 employees on 12 parks is not okay in my eyes, this is what I do for a profession. So, that money is not allocated to our parks in any way, shape or form. So, and this was an idea brought on by the Budget Committee for funding and we definitely know there's a problem in parks, so we have to look at ways and means of... We all love our parks. We are park-rich here in St. Helens. As I said, we have 12 parks for a city this size, acres and acres, probably hundreds of acres. So, my vote is a no. So, with that, that's where I stand, but we're not voting right now, we're just deliberating, so. Would somebody like to make a motion? Don't we just squash this idea or...
I move that we turn down the proposed tax on soda.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to turn down the proposed soda tax and not continue research. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, with that, thank you all for showing up. It is good to see a lot of people here. We really don't have a lot of people here for our meetings and, you know, this town is growing, there is a lot going on with our city right now. We've got a whole waterfront redevelopment, we've got industrial property, we've got businesses moving in, we've got houses being built, we've got roads that need repaired. It's good to see that people are here, are passionate and when it comes to the money, that you're here, but let's keep, let's continue to be involved. I'm reaching out to all the citizens and asking you please, you know, be involved, be of service. This is a service position for each and every one of us here. And, you know, I will say this, these people have become my friends and that we, that always get along and that's okay. That's, we're doing our job to the best of our ability that we feel we're doing for you guys, so. That being said, I just wanted to thank you everybody for showing up, so. I feel you'll believe me, but I'm leaving. Thank you. Thank you, Kerry. Continue. Okay, is there any more comments before we shut this thing down?
I want to piggyback on what you're saying about the greater St. Helens Parks and Recreation District. They receive twice as much money as we allocate, allocate to, to their, to their swim program, to operating their pool, as we do with the entire acreage and our operating expenses. So, there's, there's a miscommunication amongst our citizens of where that money goes and we see none of it. So, I, I think it's important and I think Rick had a great point on that. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
You bet. Okay, moving on. Ordinance final reading. You can have your mic down. Ordinance final reading number 3218. An ordinance amending the St. Helens Municipal Code chapters 15.4 and 15.20 relating to Oregon State Building Codes and the code for abatement of dangerous buildings.
Move we adopt ordinance number 3218.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 3218. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance final reading number 3219. An ordinance relating to the universal fee schedule and park fines, amending the St.
Move we approve ordinance 3219 as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance number 3219. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. Okay, ordinance, first reading, ordinance number 3220. An ordinance to amend the City of St. Helens Comprehensive Plan Map for certain property from the light industrial designation to the general residential designation and the zoning district map from the light industrial zone to the apartment residential zone.
Move we approve ordinance...
First reading. That's right. Okay, award contract for Old Portland Road Bridge Barrier Repair Project, selling its construction for $6,000, $6,250.
Move we award contract for Old Portland Road Bridge Repair to selling its construction.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to award the bridge barrier repair to assemblies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approve and authorize for signature. A, contract, assemblies construction for Old Portland Road Bridge Barrier Repair Project. B, contract payments.
I move we approve and authorize for signature A, 8, and B as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve A, 8, and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Consent agenda for acceptance. A, Library Board minutes dated August 22nd, 2017.
Move we adopt consent agenda for acceptance, 9A.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to accept consent agenda A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Consent agenda for approval, 10. A, street closure request, B, accounts payable bill list.
Move we approve consent agenda for approval, A and B as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A and B, 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, yeah, it was very good to see a lot of people here tonight. Like I said, the city's got a lot going on. Today, we had a visit from Tobias Reed, our treasurer of the state, and it was a good meeting, me and Doug and John sat in on it and we talked about the waterfront redevelopment and he was very impressed with what we got going on as a city. And, you know, it was nice just to have him here, it was short-lived, wish we could've had a little bit more time to pick his brain and get ideas and continue to go down this process and we are going down this process. We are continuing to work on the waterfront redevelopment, for people who are wondering. Government does run slow. I'm a contractor or landscaper and I like to, if I have an idea and I got the ways and means, it's, let's get on it even a little bit, do a little bit at a time, but everything has its process, so. That was good. Looking forward to Halloween Town. I encourage everybody to get out here and enjoy the, it's our tourism dollars that are being spent here and we aren't bringing in a lot of people. Had the whole family showing up from Halloween Town. Next year marks the 20-year anniversary. I think that I've been kicking around some ideas that it would be nice to get something going for a 20-year anniversary of the shoot of Halloween Town. So, if anybody out there in the community who's listening, there's a camera, there's a camera, has any ideas or knows people, you never know what could happen. So, that's what I got. How about, let's, let's start with our council president, Morton?
Attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference and attended workshops that dealt with the homeless. Life issues going around the cities throughout the state. Certainly gave, gave me some ideas and issues that we can work with in this city to cope with that problem. Another issue was I attended the health, one put on by the Health Authority, the Health Department, and guess what that was about? Sugary drinks and tax, because I think Multnomah County is having the same, starting their same deliberation kinds of things that we did tonight, so. They're gonna try and pass a, an initiative, I think, in Multnomah County. I had a good, I had a good experience, a good learning experience at the, at the League with good workshops and I enjoyed it very much. I come back with a little more enthusiasm, always.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Counselor Morrison?
I'm just as excited about Halloween Town as you are, the year after the weekend. The kids are working busy on Halloween, Halloween teen dance, the 21st of October. I know that the schools do dances, but this is 7th grade through 12th grade, which also includes homeschool kids, Yankton kids, out of town kids. Couple of years, we've had parents that were traveling through town that their kids see and they get their out of town kids come to the dance. It's just of that age that appreciate Halloween, so I think it's kind of cool to see them do that, it's their year. I, these forums are always hard for me, cause I take all people's feelings personally and I know I shouldn't, that's why I sit here, but I do take all their feelings personally, but it is part of the process and part of what makes being American and being from Oregon so great, is you can be part of the process and part of the decision. And I think that even though it's awkward and painful and loud and crowded, that's what democracy is, so sometimes it's, it hurts, but it, we're still here because it works. It's like that.
Thank you. Counselor La?
I'd like to make a recommendation and see what you guys think about it. As you know, I walk every day down through town and whatnot and I get a lot of feedback because as I'm walking through Conby View Park, I see that the Splice Park is shooting water all over the place and sometimes there's people around and sometimes there's nobody around and it comes and goes and whatnot, so. I would like to recommend that we set a start and stop date for that water so that it, it makes it easy for our Public Works to regulate that. I know sometimes we have hot days in May, but they're few and far between and I think that probably, the community can probably get by without the Splice Park for a day or two if it does get hot in May or whatever the case is, or even April. So, I'd like to recommend that we, we set the, the Splice Park water to be turned on from June 1st through September 30th. That's okay if you guys...
Let's deliberate on that in our next meeting and put that on the agenda for, for the, that's what I'd like to do, like to think about that, make certain we work with the, with our Water Department and Public Works, see if that's copacetic, but then if you want to, if you want to resolve that right now, we could have that discussion. What do you think?
Well, I would, I wouldn't mind having, I was just down there and actually seen a kid just standing over there punching it and he was fully clothed and not even in it. Like, so you bring up a good point, cause I was just down there.
I hear about it all the time.
And it is very cold out right now, so you bring up a good point. I was, you know, I was just sitting there watching thinking, oh, okay, well, he's having fun, you know?
It wasn't working, was it?
Yeah, it was.
It was?
Yes, it was.
Turn it off. I'm not sure why it didn't be turned on.
Yeah.
So, Neil, when is the, when are the times that you usually turn them on and turn them off?
We haven't really set a set time. I usually have Crystal put it out when we do turn it on and it's, it's been pretty much weather driven to start.
So, the problem I have with that suggestion, Keith, is if it gets really warm at a certain time and it's really hot, then the flexibility of Public Works to kind of use their, you know, use their mind to kind of work with that goes away.
But if there's a sign there.
Then it becomes just a kind of a slot where, okay, turn it on here and turn it off there and that's it.
Sometimes we have years that the summer never comes.
Yeah.
Until like the end of June and it doesn't make sense to have it on and then there's some years where we're in 90 degrees at the end of April.
Just like September this year, I think we got a lot of hot days.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, most of the parks that I visit, it's very somewhere between May 1st and October 1st. Some of them, it's the school summer calendar and some of it's a little bit further. So, it really depends and I think it just depends on you, so maybe the neighbors, you know, different communities that can get a lot of use during the other times, so we could definitely talk about it.
So, Neil, have you had any complaints about the, about the fountain not being on or off or whatever, other than what Keith brings up?
In May, towards the end of May, I believe that...
Yeah, cause we had a heat wave this year.
We had a heat wave.
We did.
And it wasn't on and a lot of people called and...
I mean, if we, we see...
We turned it on, so we turned it on.
Yeah, I think if we see a heat wave, we can, we can pretty much call that and, you know, I think one of the first years that you start working, you guys earlier too, right? Is that correct, Neil?
Is what?
Working the city workers, letting it start earlier?
We get during the heat wave.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think, I mean, that would be kind of like us doing the judgment calling that type of deal like Neil has to make, is turn on the water. But I agree, I agree with that date, but if it comes to heat wave...
Well, okay, so what if the heat wave lasts one day?
It's not a heat wave. It has to be three or more.
It is if you're down there in the park.
By definition of a weatherman, because I live and die by weather, my profession...
I'm just going by what I've heard.
By definition of a heat wave has to be three days or more.
I'm, I'm just going by what I've heard from the community in the park.
Yeah.
That's what I'm going by.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, you take it for what it's worth.
No, I hear you, loud and clear. Is it just about? I'm okay with that. You're saying June first to September thirtieth? Which should have been shut off about four days ago.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I guess I, with Doug, I would just support Public Works making the call based on the weather. I don't think you have to put it by decree, because what happens if the weather's different and then it's not on? Or what happens if they decide it gets yucky and they're going to turn it off the fifteenth of September? It's like, let Public Works do their job.
And I think Keith's, I think Keith's suggestion is good for a general, a general policy. That's when it should go on, and that's when it should go off. But I think the calls should be made by the Public Works people and the parks people of monitoring the weather and using their common sense in terms of turning the thing on or off.
So, just to let you know, I actually heard from a couple of public workers, and they would, they recommended that we set a date and time. That's what I heard. It was not Neil or Sue. So, anyway, just because they get complaints and whatnot. If it's written stone, then there are no complaints.
Well, if it's written in stone, there will be complaints. I disagree with that statement, because if it's a hundred degrees, three days in May, and you're not turning it on until June first, there will be complaints.
So, where are we going with this, folks? Better rule.
Rule of exception built into it somehow, some discretion. Probably appropriate.
All right, how about we go with a, the dates that Keith had discussed, June first through September thirtieth, except for the rule of a heat wave.
Weather exceptions.
Weather exceptions.
Our Public Works Superintendent has ultimate authority.
There you go. Do we need to make that an ordinance?
No, we need to make that phone number right on the bottom.
It already gets there, boy.
I'd give it two. That's why I'm bringing this up.
All right, so we'll see to that that happens. Is that what we're saying?
No.
No? Okay.
I guess put it on the next meeting's agenda. Has ever, almost eight o'clock. All right.
Keith, anything else?
No.
Okay. Sean. Do you want to go last?
It's going to go in that order.
Yeah, I'm going back for you.
Yeah, if you want my, my report, right?
Did you tell me off guard?
Yeah, you did, actually. Wanted to compliment the council on the public forum tonight. I think that although the space was a challenge, I mean, I don't really know with these things how big they're going to be, but well-run, and everybody was very civil and great. Halloween is well upon us. It's bigger, better than ever. The, don't have a lot of the metrics yet. We're starting to get a lot of inquiries from the big media. Last year, you know, we had Good Morning America on just about every Portland news station, and we're starting to do interviews this week with the number of those agencies as well. Right now, we have like seventy thousand followers on our Facebook. Expect that to go up exponentially here very soon to the millions that it was, visits to our sites that we had last year. Right before the meeting here, I hopped on the shuttle bus that's going to be running up through the business district on a continuous basis here over the weekend, throughout the month. Down to see the, we have the underworld, which is the Stonehedge Recreation, and then also the, further down, the Alien Invasion, where the spaceship has landed and creating a nice, fabulous opportunity for photo opportunities. If you haven't seen it, it's going to be great. There's, it'll be part of the tractor rides that go around in a circle for people to stop and get photo opportunities. Yeah, more props, probably more people, hopefully for a safe and enjoyable visit for all the people coming to our community. And special thanks to all, this is a lot of work by a lot of people that get this to happen, and thanks to everybody. That's it.
Now, I would encourage everybody to take advantage of the shuttle bus. Take complete advantage of that, so push from here all the way up to the whole district and back down. Correct?
Yep. Discover Columbia County is the website, is the agenda. And other ads here.
Okay, Kathy?
Nothing to report.
Matt?
Just real quickly to follow up on these votes. What I'd like to just get a general consensus is to go back, compile the totals of everything, and bring a discussion back to the council about what options you would like to move forward with, possibly, likely in November. Just briefly browsing through, Closing Parks is a big one, which is not going to be an easy discussion, I'm sure. Probably something the council would like to put out to commissions and the public to get feedback on, and more feedback. So, what did you say?
Closing parks?
The general, a lot of them have circled closed parks.
Is that that due?
No, this was all handwritten ones.
I was making sure.
Yep, no, the box is over here and will be thrown away, so.
So, what options did you give them on that, Matt? I'm just curious.
There are eleven options, grants, debt, waiting for development, local option levy, bond, utility bill service fees, sugar sweetened beverage tax, other excise taxes, privatized parks, closed leased used or small parks, and adopt programs and partners. And the bottom two, generally speaking, appear to be the most voted for. So, that creates a longer process and more discussions that, in my personal opinion, need to happen sooner rather than later because of the current state of our.
I would agree that, Matt, if you're talking about that, but the sugary drink tax, we're done talking about.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, I got that. I got that concept.
So, yes, I would agree with that.
So, what I'd like to do is come back in November, show you the actual totals, and then have a discussion of where the council would like to move forward.
That sounds great.
If we're going to talk about closing parks, we're going to have to go to the, what's the new name for the Rose Quarter?
Modus.
Modus Center, yeah. We're going to have to get the Modus Center on that one.
Oh, might be able to get a Pepsi or Coke this morning.
So, I'll set up a discussion for November to, for the council to receive feedback and have more talk. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Margaret?
You've been hearing we talk for the last few meetings about the fact that the library is hosting a year-long series on civics for adults. It's enhancing civic knowledge and inspiring political engagement. There are four evenings planned. We had the first one this past Thursday, September twenty-first, and forty people showed up. And it was really a very pleasant surprise to see so many citizens in St. Helens that wanted to learn about how to become civically engaged. Our next workshop is going to be February fifteenth, and that's called Citizen Activism One-on-One, Making Change Happen. And it will be occurring when our state legislature is in session. And so, there will be a little bit of a focus on how to be able to get your point of view communicated to the state legislature on issues that are currently before them. I have brochures, if anybody's interested. It just is free of charge, you just come and participate. The other thing that I mentioned is, in the past too, is that we're picking off St. Helens Public Library Book Club. It's going to meet quarterly. It's being led by two of our library board members, and it's going to be different in that we're not all going to read the same book. It's difficult for a small library like ours to buy multiple copies of one title. So, what they're introducing is a theme each quarter, and then you read a book that fits the theme, and then come prepared to share your particular book with the group. And they'll be posing generic questions that you can answer about your specific books. But this first one is going to be Thursday, October nineteenth, from seven to nine in the library, and the theme is Mystery with a Halloween Twist. And because it's kind of short notice, you don't have a full three months to read your book and get ready, they're saying if you've previously read a book that's a favorite under this theme, that you can just dust it off and bring it and talk about it with the group. So, that's Thursday, October nineteenth in the library. And so, I have brochures about that if you're interested as well. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Margaret. Neil?
Just had one thing, I wanted to give praise up to our assistant planner, Katie Kemp Show. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I believe she got the grant for the restroom at Columbia, or at Great Cliff Park. Is that right? That's what she told me.
It's not official, so I can't know what you're talking about.
That's worrying, though, that.
But we did score four.
Cat's out of the bag now. Thanks, Neil. Oh, Matt, Matt's got something on that.
Sorry, just wanted to jump in. You've probably noticed the new carpet that was installed the last few days. I do want to say publicly a big, huge, huge thank you to Public Works staff, and especially Roger and his staff for helping move all the stuff. Along with Halloween Town, it was not very well timed. On her behalf, with everything going on with Halloween Town, but him and the entire Public Works staff helped me out. Just want to say very much thank you to them.
And it looks fantastic.
And I would like to say thank you as well. I think we as a council as a whole would like to say thank you to, it looks pretty sharp around here. The new paint, everything, good vision. Matthew, I know you spearheaded part of this. Yep. Okay, Sue.
Okay, I had a couple of things. The first one was, I want to just acknowledge Matt and all the time that he put into doing all the research and putting together all the information and everything on the sweetened beverage tax. It wasn't, it wasn't his idea. He's not the one that was advocating anything for it. I just, he's not the bad guy or anything here, but he did put a lot of time and a lot of effort into putting together the information so that people could look at the options that they had. So, Matt, it was a good job. I think you did a great job with what you had. Also, to all the volunteers so far that have been working on the Halloween Town. So far, it's looking awesome. Every year, it gets better, and they're doing a great job. But I very much want to acknowledge every day I see the Public Works guys all over downtown area setting stuff up. And so, once again, Neil, thank your staff for putting in so much time and making this a really nice event for the community. So, that's, I think that's about all I have. Oh, both Neil and I, at the next scheduled meeting, we will be attending a Public Works conference that week. So, we will not be, either one of us will be at the council meeting, the next scheduled October meeting. That is all.
Thank you, Sue. Chief Moss? You have nothing. Thank you for showing up in uniform tonight.
My pleasure.
Yeah, you're pretty sharp. Okay. We're adjourned.